Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. When the petition, special land use or site plan approval request in which you are interested in is called, please come forward after staff introduces the case. Please give your name and address to the secretary for the record. After the appellant's presentation, others may comment. An affirmative vote of the majority of the members present is necessary to grant a petition, special land use, or site plan approval. Recommendations on all petitions made by the commission are then forwarded to city council. If there are no further questions, the secretary will call roll and then the first item of business. Brayley, Jones.
Here.
Severco.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Knight and Gale. Present. Henley.
Here.
Bryan.
Don.
We do have a forum. First order of business, approval of minutes from the September 26, 2017 meeting. Approval of agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First case under new business, case number J-170043, public hearing for an application for special approval of a used car lot at 1843 East Genesee. We're ready.
My name is John Maury with D&amp;M Site Surveying and Engineering. And what we're presenting to the planning commission is a proposed car sales lot at 1843 East Genesee. Can you hear me anyway? The property is zoned correctly. It's the site of the former Church's Fried Chicken on the corner of Remington and Genesee. It's Zone B2. Basically, we are just using the existing facility. No changes to the outside parking, storm drainage, sanitary or water. There is just some interior renovations to convert the restaurant into more of an office space for the car lot. The parking isn't an issue. We've got 1,300 square foot of building and the zoning ordinance is one space for 400 feet, so the parking requirement's only four spaces. And basically, that's all that we have. We did have, we are dealing with Scott Nazinski over at the code enforcement to make sure that the bathrooms are barrier-free, handicap-accessible. And we had, Scott also commented on the soffit detail. We had some rotting wood holding up the soffit, and so that's going to be replaced. Our architect on this is Jerry Bergman over here in the city. And that seems to be our only concern from a code enforcement issue that we're taking care of. And I saw that on the comments, which I haven't seen yet, this is the first time I saw those, is that they're recommending that we eliminate the three spaces, the three spaces that are to the east, so right here. And I'm assuming that that's a clear vision concern for the city. And so that's no problem to eliminate the three. We had 45 spaces shown on his plan, 45 vehicles. With the four required by the ordinance for the employees, so that's 41. We'll eliminate those three, take us down to 38, 38 spots. The other issue was just having bumper blocks on the site plan, so to make sure that none of the vehicles hang over the road. We do have a sidewalk that goes all the way around here, so right now those spaces, we do have a curve on the Remington side, but over here on the Genesee side, it was just concerned that we didn't hang into the road right away, hang over that sidewalk with any of the vehicles. So other than that, pretty simple one. Not doing anything major. Any questions? It's nice to see these old properties get some new life, though.
What are you doing about fencing around the property? That's kind of like on the back of the property. Is there going to be any fencing?
That already exists, doesn't it? The back of the west side, there's already fencing.
It's already, okay.
It's already fenced.
The fence is way inside the property line, too. It's at the back of the parking lot. So we're 10 foot off the property line here, probably 5 foot off the property line already.
Okay. And this is for staff. We just re-zoned this right so they could do this?
Yes, council approved it. It took effect on October 19.
Because what year was it that they changed? They even zoned it to anything.
I'm sorry, what was it?
What year did they actually have zoning in that area? I can't remember.
Well, that was Zone B1 previously, which did not allow for the used car lot.
The previous site was a gas station. It was an old Shell station.
Oh, okay. That must have been.
It was '67s, '67s.
Because this zoning took effect in about '81.
Yeah, it was a Shell gas station. It was a big one.
And actually, that whole side of that block from Rib Shack down is re-zoned to B2 now.
If approved, how quickly would you have the car lot up and running, that's your timetable?
We had to redo it.
We're working on the interior right now. Working with Scott over at the city. He was, the barrier-free issues in that bathroom. And just removing some interior old restaurant items and seating areas to make it more office-friendly. It'll be more of partitions than walls. That'll be put in there for a couple of salesmen.
So there's no change to the parking lot? The parking lot looks like it's recently been resurfaced.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's no construction change at all, other than the things you're talking about inside the building and the little awning outside?
Correct.
Engineering did review those, the parking lot, and they had no problems with it, except for the issues in that memo with the restriping. And they plan on restriping as soon as the weather will allow them to do that.
So realistically, you'd be in operation within 30 days?
Sure. I don't want it that bad. You know, maybe a night.
Could you state your name and your address to this for the record?
Neil Greenfield. 5447 Old Bridge Back, Beavis and Bishop.
Any other comments or questions? Being as this is a public hearing, we'll have to announce three times if anyone with us this evening has any further comments or questions coming from the audience. Are there any further comments or questions coming from the audience? Last chance, are there any other comments or questions coming from the audience? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve J-170043. Just as long as all the guidelines from city engineering and inspection are completed. And the timeline, I'll give them almost nine months to a year, just because the weather's going to get to where you're parking and striping and everything.
Do we have support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next case, number J-170042, slight site plan approval for a new building at Do you would state your name and address, sir?
My name is Carlos Cantu. My address is 4534 Baker Road in Bridgeport. The property address is 2510 East Genesee.
Carlos, go ahead and tell them about your plans.
Okay, that used to be an old Sullivan's Restaurant. I've owned it for approximately 25 years. I bought it in September of 92. Last year, we had a fire back toward the kitchen. Ended up, we demolished the building. We want to put up a new building on the same site, except for some of the restrictions, like the setbacks. We've got to move the, the building will be set back from Genesee because it's really right up to the sidewalk. It'll be basically the same size. It will not be a bar restaurant anymore. The building is being set up for a daycare. I own the building across the street, which used to be Credit Union, the automotive of Credit Union that serviced the plant there. It used to be Delphi. Those people have outgrown that building, and so they would be moving into the new daycare center. I guess that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, the...
I do have one question. A lot of times when we get plans, we get like the actual plan of the building, what it's going to look like, the elevations. Do you have any architectural drawings at all of what you're planning on putting in?
Yes. Mr. Faust has all the drawings, and they were done by Austin, Austin Architects. I'm sorry, I didn't know how these type of meetings went, and I didn't know if I should have. I think John here was a little more prepared with his board there, but I didn't know what was expected here.
Well, I was just kind of looking at this. We only have like aerial views of the actual street and, you know, just like the plan of where trees are going to be, but I don't have anything for a building.
Why don't you describe the building for me?
I have it sort of planned out in a truck chair. I'll go run it through.
Yeah, I'll. When those were emailed to me, I don't think I'd get that footage.
Okay. Because that's like... And I think traditionally, we try to approve anything without seeing some of the plans.
Well, I have a similar question. Looking at this memo to you from Beth London, normally when we get these things, things are pretty well spelled out, maybe with a reservation or two from engineering. We've had a page of reservations here. Why are we dealing with this now? Is there a hurry up, or, I mean, it doesn't appear to me that...
He was hoping to get some construction done. The problem is, engineering's had this for quite some time, but they're short an engineer right now. And I just got that report from engineering late last week. Just, in fact, it came, I had to rewrite your memo and say that it was included, because when I first wrote it, before I sent the packet out, I did not have that. So those probably got to me last Thursday, I think was when I mailed those. So they ended up having quite a few questions. There were some problems with the architects involved, and Mr. Cantu is going to have to get a different architect to finish the project for him. So that's, there is quite a bit there.
Should we not be dealing with that then, after that kind of thing has been rectified?
Well, you know, in the past, there's been others that you guys have approved with dependent contingent upon engineering approval.
I understand that, but we have a page of them.
Yeah. A lot of those are just things that were omitted from the plan, like the entrances are there now. They aren't going to change at all. The main thing I think you're dealing with is the type of pipe used, the drainage and where it's going to go. Part of that is because East Genesee, all of that was redone.
And we had one aerial view.
Along the street, maybe two or three years ago. So, I mean, it's up to you, but most of that is things that engineering's aware of. And if you make a contingent upon engineering approval, once those things are...
I apologize, I didn't know that's a priority.
The main reason is that a lot of the stuff was not on the plan. It is there, it just was not on the plan.
I see. I see five of these things have to do with water issues. Let me ask you another question, staff. This is, are daycare centers allowed with B1?
No. Although, we're in the process right now of redoing that, because if you look back over the last two years, I believe that you have approved three, if not four, daycares in a B1 district. And what happens is, as we go through this, when I see that there's things that you consistently approve, then it's time to change the ordinance and make that an allowed use. So they may have to come before the zoning board for approval as well of the daycare. But we're talking, when do you think you'll have this done?
It'll be a good six months before it's done.
So there'll be time to do that. And in the meantime, we may end up changing the ordinance to allow a daycare in a B1.
The other side of that is the daycare is stopped 15 miles right across the street.
And that's one that you approved? That's one that you approved? When was it, six, no, probably...
Two and a half years ago.
Really? Two and a half years.
This looks a little bit like more information that we need.
Like most of, we've never approved anything until in the past, that's basically.
Without seeing a building.
Okay. I apologize, this is my first time, so...
And I was like, when I read this at home, I'm like, okay, where's the building?
So the new structure will also house the existing clients in the old structure across the street? Is that what you...
No, they want to, since they've outgrown it, they want to keep the one across the street and have the babies over there. And then across this new building, they'll have the bigger kids. I guess both of the owners of that daycare, of the business anyways, have gone to school to be directors, or whatever they call them. So they're allowed now to have older kids and have classes there, too.
So you're not necessarily going to be part of the day-to-day daycare operation?
No, no.
You're simply providing them with a structure?
Right.
Which you will lease to them, and is that correct?
Well, I'll do whatever they need to have. I bought some property from the Saginaw Land Bank across the street, so they could have a playground, and fenced it all in. I'll do the same here. I bought the land bank's property behind my property there. There were a couple houses that tore down, so it's all grass now. So I'll fence that in, so they'll have a playground.
So you'll simply be the landlord?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm trying to do something nicer for the city. I mean, I don't want to leave it vacant, and, you know, it's better to have something there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henley, to answer your question a little further, a lot of the things on that engineering report would have been taken care of by now, except that there's been a change in the architect. There were some difficulties with the architect. So instead of me being able to pick up the phone and say, hey, we need this on the drawing, I wasn't able to do that.
So now, is this draft from the current architect or previous architect?
Well, that's the architect that did that, the actual one. I'm hoping that John here will do the, what's required by engineering.
Okay.
As far as the building goes, oh, it will look as it does there. As you see from that memo from engineering, most of that deals with water, where the entrances were. The one thing that I found on it was that the length of the parking spaces was in there and was correct, but the width doesn't show up on there at all. So that was just, that was something that could have been corrected if I was still dealing with the other architect.
So why did the setback change?
Just because that's what the owner wants.
Oh, I just wondered if it was...
No, it was nothing to do with our ordinance, it was just what he requested.
So essentially, for us to move forward tonight, there would have to be multiple stipulations included in the motion to make sure everything that's outlined by engineering, as far as water runoff is met.
Or you could just put contingent upon engineering approval. We got a little spoiled in the last six months or so. Most of our problems that engineering had were taken care of, and that's because we had an additional engineer. So things were flowing a lot smoother. They're advertising for another one now, but being short staff there behind the uncertainty.
Understandable. Do we have any further questions or comments? Commissioner Henley, are you ready to move forward?
Yep, I think so.
Okay. Do we have a motion on case 170042?
I move that we approve J-170042. And the only stipulation is that they, is everything that they do is approved by city engineering that's attached to this list and anything else that you find.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Oh, we have a different timeframe?
Oh, correct, yeah. Sorry, timeframe, what are your thoughts? You've got to take and demolish the existing facility, is that correct? Oh, it's gone already?
Yes.
Okay, so timeframe?
Well, first of all, I have to speak with John here on doing the civil engineer stuff, because we can't start it until engineering approves it. Once that's approved, then it'll probably be, hopefully in the next couple of months, we can get it started.
How do we get it started?
The contractor says he can work during the winter, so they put on...
So they give you a nine-month completion? That should do it. Nine months to complete the whole building, the whole project?
Yeah.
Okay. With a nine-month... I'll say with a nine-month completion.
Okay.
Do you want to keep that?
No, you can take it.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome, thank you.
Did we vote yet? I don't think so.
Yeah, we did, we voted.
I don't think we did, did we?
Yeah, we did, we did.
I must have checked out, it's been a long day.
Next order of business is, I'm assuming, an open discussion of form-based zoning code, rough draft with Kathleen Duffy. And you must be Kathleen? Wonderful, welcome.
This is my colleague, Michelle. I know Mike sent you a draft a few weeks ago, I don't know if she can still look at it, but it's this time my colleague who took a job teaching English in Spain, so...
Okay.
She's there. But in the meantime, I had to get myself caught up. I've been here with you before. I helped really launch the project with Michelle, so I've been a part of the process, but when it came to the draft, I had to really refamiliarize myself with her approach. And so what I'm passing out are copies of the slides. I apologize that I took the template and changed the date on the file name, but not on the screen. So I kind of want to talk you through the draft. As it stands now, I've been working furiously on it the last week here. Things have been hectic with her being gone, so I apologize that we didn't get it out to review more in advance, but I hope this will be a good chance for me to kind of walk you through how it's organized and how to use it, so that when you're digesting some of the details, you'll get better to provide feedback on it. So I just kind of want to go through those things. I have a couple key questions I have for you guys, and then we'll discuss the next steps of going through the adoption process. And feel free to chime in at any time. Let's keep this casual and informational. So I moved things around a bit, so I'm going to stop saying how I changed things from the draft that you had, and just talk about what we have now. This is the kind of table of contents that we're working with. Michelle wrote a really good purpose, why we're doing this. I think that we found out in a lot of the public involvement stakeholder meetings, developer roundtable, why this is important to provide a little bit more clarity for your riverfront district and dividing it into sub-districts that kind of meet the intent of what people told us at all the workshops and meetings, and based on our analysis of existing conditions and kind of the vision of where everyone wants to see things go across this wide spectrum of land that is the riverfront area. And then, so there's a new map, so the idea is that you have an amendment to your zoning map that would include this new draft plan. Building form standards, we'll get into that a little bit. Then there are other design standards that go beyond, that are representative of the entire district, specific Main Street standards, which really applies to your downtown and old town areas uses. I want to talk a little bit about parking and administrative provisions, and then definitions and rules of measurement, which we might move up. I think those might be important enough that they might get lost and help a reader of this understand it a bit better. So the regulating plan. In a form-based code, we go beyond calling it a zoning map to calling it a regulating plan. Where do those regulations apply? It's for all intents and purposes a zoning map. So we've talked about this before with you and with Mike a lot. Still open for discussion. The biggest thing to take away from this are these six different areas that we're looking at in terms of similar character, both existing and future. So proposed, be thinking, you know, that this is not necessarily what things are right now, but what we'd like them to become. Be thinking, you know, that this is not necessarily what things are right now, but what we'd like them to become. Another designation on the regulating plan is the designation of what we're calling primary streets. So those are your main corridors through the district where there might be different, slightly different requirements that promote walkability, that promote that kind of better image, gateway image. It's a way to kind of designate your main corridors, your main thoroughfares, your main streets and Main Street and Old Town, a way to give them a little bit more importance for how we regulate how things feel along those streets. So we won't go too much into the detail of the map, but take it with you. I'm going to send Mike a bigger version so you can read the street names better. So he can forward that to you if there are any things that you think need to be changed. So we have these districts. I think I was here when we presented these last fall, last spring. Michelle has been back, I think, more recently than I have, but they haven't changed much. So the idea is that Main Street is your old town and your downtown. So when it comes to, when you think of the heart of Saginaw, those key areas, walkable, mixed use, good attention to streetscape, buildings fronting the street. Urban Edge are kind of those areas that border each of those districts. So there might be some transitioning uses that, there might be some that still look like the Main Street district, but has more flexibility in terms of where parking can be located, a little bit different mixture of uses and mixture of building types. Riverfront Commercial is our more traditional suburban-style commercial that you have going along on both sides of the river. It's allowing for more auto-dependent uses and orientations. So when it comes to drive-throughs and parking, it's just, it still has an emphasis on form and design, but is a little bit more flexible, less on the walkability, more on the auto-dependency, but also making that parking less dominant on those primary streets. The Urban Flex is our kind of industrial transitioning district where we were really thinking about how an eclectic mix of things could go in there. Really pretty, maybe the most flexible district, sub-district here we have. Thinking of how some of the, allowing some light industrial to continue, but as things develop and people want more eclectic, interesting warehouse district-type uses, flexible housing, things like that, just an interesting mix of things. Institutional is exactly what it sounds like. It's your main law treatment plant, the parks, the hospitals, big campus-style things that probably you're not going to touch all of the public stuff, but for the hospitals, it would just require them to come in when they want to do something and get you to look at it as a campus-style thing. So preserving historic resources, but also allowing the flexibility for campus-style development for the hospitals. And then Riverfront Residential are these little kind of pockets of very traditionally single-family neighborhoods kind of on the boundaries that are within this riverfront district, but don't necessarily need to be mixed use. So whereby having, designating them on here, it opens up the opportunity, if you like how this form-based code works in the future, to have that kind of a district expand beyond this boundary. So it's setting, really setting you up for future amendments to allow that mixture of housing types. So it's less about different uses, more on housing types. So allowing townhouses and apartments at key locations in those areas. So we have our districts, then we have our building types. So this is where reform-based codes can get a little bit tricky, but I think it's important to note that these building types are indicative of what you already have here. So it's a way of us categorizing what we see as all these different components and what makes the character of the district so great as it is now and really customizing the regulations to meet those things. So that if someone comes in and wants to build a mixed-use building in the Main Street district, it's going to be very straightforward, they go, they find their regulations in the chart. If someone wants to build townhouses in the Flex district, they have very specific standards for what those look like there because a townhouse on one side of town might not exactly be the same on another. So it provides just a finer grain of detail because it is such an expansive big district. But these are basically your regulations are each of these building types. So if someone comes in and has a single-family house that they want to convert to a law office, they're able to, you know, preserve that historic character of the house and follow certain guidelines in terms of parking and design. So we have general mixed use, which is your basic, like, default building type kind of when you think of a downtown or just a box with mixture of uses, but generally fronting the street. Apartment, so that's the idea that like there's one main entrance, but it's primarily flats or apartments in there. We like to see some of these that are more smaller, finer green detail. There's a need for more smaller urban-style apartment buildings that used to be built like 100 years ago. I used to live in one in Champaign or Illinois and they just don't build them like that very much anymore. But there's some, you know, the one entrance at the front. And townhouses, as you can picture, more like row houses, brownstones, whatever you want to call them, one entrance per unit and house again, whether it has a single-family home in it or it has two families or a law office. It's preserving that character of what was a historically a single-family home. And then drive-through, because there are lots of drive-throughs already in the district and this just kind of gives them some stronger design standards for controlling where you do have them. New ones that come in can be of a little bit higher quality, but acknowledging that that's still a use. So here's a little table that's in the code that describes how those building types are applied across the different districts. You can see it's similar to how we deal with uses, so permitted and special land uses. So depending on where you are, like, only in the rarest of occasions would you probably want to allow townhouses in old town or downtown. You could argue maybe we even take those off there, but you want to preserve your retail kind of storefronts in those areas. So we don't really want a lot of townhouses to go in just by right. Another thing that I could pull out is, you'll notice in, let's see, Riverfront Commercial, we don't really think that townhouses make a lot of sense in that district. Apartment buildings make more sense, mixed-use buildings and drive-throughs. There you see the drive-throughs really are only special land uses as they probably already are in the Riverfront Commercial District and the Urban Flex District. So this is, this kind of gives you the idea of where different things are allowed and similar to uses, we haven't forgotten about uses, they're still coming up here. Just gives you an idea of where these mixture of things are appropriate across the area. Does anyone have any questions yet?
I'd like to point out on this, under our current ordinance, the houses that are there, the large historic houses that we have, we have in there that they can be considered the same as if they were in a residential district, that people can repair them, rebuild them, add additions to them just as if they were in an R1 or an R2 district. We had decided previously that we did not want any new single-family homes in the Riverfront District, but after talking to Michelle and Kathleen about it, I think that this new ordinance will allow for new housing, that they will still have to be huge, large houses that fit into the character of that neighborhood. So you wouldn't be able to go in the middle of one of these areas where there's several large houses and build a single-family ranch house. If you want to build a mansion of sorts, that would be fine, but not any single-family, one-story houses.
Yeah, I think we have a minimum two-story.
I know that like across, you know, talk about tiny houses. How would that fit into this?
Probably under your accessory stuff, we haven't really talked about accessory structures. Is that something you think makes sense?
I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I mean, because if it's something you want to add, we could, I don't know. Maybe that's an amendment after it gets adopted. I don't, I haven't looked at your access, is there a whole chapter on accessory right now?
There is, but tiny houses are not in our ordinance at all.
So it depends on if it's a principal or accessory use. Like if you're talking about building a tiny house on the back of like another lot or something.
I don't picture tiny houses in this district at all. I mean, we're talking about those between other areas of the city.
Well, I just had to ask the question since we were talking about various districts.
No, that's good. I mean, I think what this is promoting is a variety of housing types. So it's more than, as a big urban city, you really have people that are looking for that urban living and having flexible units for sure. Like not everyone wants to live in an apartment building or a single-family home, there's that in-between stuff. So I'll have to think about that and see if anyone could do it and if, whether you want to allow them or not is another question. Because I think we do have a provision in here for multiple buildings on one lot. Someone might be able to do that as long as it doesn't front the street and look ugly. You might be able to tuck it in the back, but we haven't looked, again, at the accessory. We just assumed that your existing accessory stuff would stay, but I'm just going to make.
Our existing accessory doesn't address it at all.
Okay.
Now, just so you know, I have been looking for neighborhoods for this and there are some areas that I've looked at that are close to this district, but not in it.
In a more traditional, I think it would make sense in a nearby residential, more residential district rather than these mixed uses. So as I said, each building type has its own table of standards. So the ones that you're going to see the most are probably the general mixed-use buildings because that's your typical, so that's what I have up here as an example. So in your ordinance, draft ordinance here, we have kind of an introduction to the building form standards about why we're doing this, summary of the little building types, which I just described. Here's that building type by district page. And then we get into, so you can see here's a page on general mixed use, a page on apartments. And you'll see across the top that some of them, like urban house, is only allowed in a couple of districts, so we're only showing a couple of things there. So each of these sections is broken down into subsections in the table in terms of height, siting, and design elements. So these are where things are different across the districts. The next section is overall design standards. So these are things that apply to everything. I haven't decided yet, it might make more sense for these to go before the building form standards because they apply to everything. But these are more like general provisions, right? These are things that apply no matter what district you're in. Facade articulation, to think about how a building is built with its, the materials on the outside and having, so that's not just a blank wall. Building materials, I know we wanted to be careful about how we regulated building materials, so take a look at this section and see if it's generic enough or specific enough for requiring some higher-quality building materials, but not being too specific on architectural styles. That's kind of the vibe we got. And so we tried to make this a little, like, just specific enough, but not too prescriptive so that an architect can still be creative and give you cool things. We talk about pedestrian access, you know, where you have entrances, how those entrances should feel important, especially with previous new builds in downtown where the entrance is not on the Main Street. General site design, just, and then landscaping. So this is a big section that was not in the draft from a month ago. So I tried to come up with some standards that I thought made sense for that area in front of a street, in front of a building, that's, we call it like the street yard, the door yard, that area where you think about walkability and streetscape and stuff like that. Or if it's in a more residential district, if you're in the urban edge district where there's a church and a, you know, the library, that's kind of all urban edge area. Some single-family houses or an office building that is set back 15 feet, how that should be placed in the front. Not calling it a green belt because green belts really think of, you think of suburban, you know, farms and stuff like that, but urban-style landscape that still fits, an emphasis on character and how it feels when you're walking down the street. Parking lot landscaping, here's a little spot where there's multiple buildings on a single lot. Then there's some exceptions to that, so encirclements, projections, things that you guys have seen before. Then there's the section on Main Street. So there's this picture of this little Main Street-looking building. So the idea is that the Main Streets, which are defined in the ordinance basically as your core downtown and old town, the main areas, those prime walkable, shockable, shockable, I don't know if there's an other word, areas that they're required to have a little bit more. We want more windows, you know, storefronts when you think of walking down there, having better specific articulations that it feels, you can feel like there's one level and then the upper floors are something else. And then limiting the uses. So there we really want active retail, restaurant uses. So these are just supplementary regulations for that kind of pseudo-district. Then we get into uses, let's see if I, this is, okay. So I dropped these in, these are from the definition section, which is at the end. But it related to building form standards, so I thought it was important to kind of describe some of the things that are in these tables. So I made these graphics last week that I think help articulate what's in the text a little bit better. So when we talk about, what's nice about having a form-based code is that you have requirements that force people to build at the front of the lot, right? Not thinking of setbacks where there's space in between, but we want the buildings to front the street and we want a great public realm in between the building, the right-of-way of the street. So there's what's in here as a frontage calculation in each of these. It's really only in the most walkable Main Street districts where your required ends, a mixed-use building, that you have to occupy a certain percentage of your front yard. So this little area, so the Main Street is on going north-south here and then the side street, which are defined in there, what the difference between a primary and side street are, is that that frontage, it has to, so for instance, in your current downtown along a primary street, so right along Washington or Genesee, you would have an 85% build-to requirement between five and 10 feet. So that's, we're requiring them to be set back a little bit. And that space in front would be kind of, you know, cushioned space for more outdoor seating and stuff like that. But 85% of that zone needs to have building in it so that you can't have parking, it can't be, you can't have missing teeth. So it's really trying to keep a strong percentage of buildings facing the street. So like I said, those are really in the most urban, most downtown, old-town areas that have that frontage percentage build-to. So where, I have a question for you, is we have some exceptions in here. So we have things like courtyards, permanent outdoor seating, so like an outdoor cafe, private open space, those are reasons that people could not meet that total percentage if they have one of those things. So do we think that those make sense in all of those areas in downtown and old town? Or are there areas where we'd rather those things go in a backyard or, and keep things, keep the rhythm of the building facades very solid, I guess? The idea of exceptions, that you would have those moments of break where you could have an outdoor cafe or a courtyard or a park lot or something like that. You're already, the minimum is 85% at the most dense, so people could have 15% of that space be something else. But we basically would allow them to count towards that total percentage fronting the street with something other than an actual building. So I don't know if anyone has any strong opinions on that or needs more explanation.
I'm not quite sure what you mean by permanent outdoor seating.
So I'll read you the little definition. It's the idea that it would be a pseudostructure covered with like a garden wall, patio seating placed between the building and the front or side lot line. So it's not just like putting your chairs and tables out in the summer on, in the right-of-way, but it would be that area in the front, like it would allow someone to even set things back a little more to have more out, I mean, obviously we're not going to be eating out there in the winter, but more, integrated into the design of the building, but more public, pseudo-public space. So to me, it may, I was going to propose something, but I thought it'd be worth discussing with you because I think you could probably allow these exceptions in the downtown areas. It's just a matter of, do we think they're appropriate on the most primary walkable streets? I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure.
This is a question for staff right now, and I don't have the most appropriate students, right?
They are. I think in one of the hearings that we had, there was a lot of discussion from a couple of people at the hearing-
Yes.
-that they would like to have more outdoor seating. So if a new building set back a little more under this plan, that would be allowed, as long as that was outdoor seating.
Because other buildings don't have-
Right.
They have to kind of encroach on the sidewalk.
Yeah. So-
Yeah.
We're already requiring them in, um, downtown to be set back at a minimum five feet, if not to, all the way up to ten feet, but it would, it would basically say that if they wanted to move it back more for more seating, they could do that, as long as you're okay that the building, you know, might, building line, that like edge, might jag in for, you know, someone proposing a new building. As long as we're, we're usually saying, we think that's probably fine, as long as that's active urban courtyard space, that sort of thing. If that seems okay, then we'll just say that it's allowed as an overall deviation, basically, exception. We just don't want little pockets of weird leftover space that aren't intentional. I guess that's the other reason to have this stipulation in there, is that it needs to be an active use, so that you don't just have scary places where people can hang out and, they don't, crime prevention through environmental design, SEPTED is this like theory that if you ha, don't, if you leave little open spaces, creepy people will hang out there, and that's not what we want, so.
Mike, are we supposed to respond back to you on this, or?
Well, right now, if you need time to think, yeah. So Mike will be collecting comments, so I'm happy to hear your thoughts on things right now, if anyone has any questions or thoughts. Um, but, yeah, Mike will be collecting comments once you have time to digest it more.
I'll probably just forward a lot of those on to Kathleen, so that she can see what your thought is.
I think someone's having to digest it.
That's fine. I knew that was gonna be the case, so it's me trying to explain it.
No, the, the explanation certainly helps.
Yeah. The last thing I want you to have is a code that you can't implement, and so I think it was a little overly complicated and confusing, and so I'm trying to like distill it down into getting exactly what you need, without it being too complicated. It is a very broad, diverse district, though. That's what makes it challenging to have it be too simple. Some other definitions I wanted to explain along those primary streets. So again, your Main Street frontage in, um, in downtown and old town, we don't want parking in, um, that first thirty feet. So basically, requires that everything be set back at least thirty feet. And, that also, um, will lead me into another question in a minute about parking structures and where you think those are appropriate, so be thinking about that. The other kind of cool, isn't the right word, um, it's a, it's a different way of thinking about how to regulate setbacks, is this idea of step backs. So, next to a single-family residential, um, zoned area, that buildings would be required, not only to be set back, the usual setback from that lot line, but that as it goes up and gets taller, um, it has to be set back even more. So upper story levels have to be stepped back. So that's with that, when we say upper floor step back. So that's something else that's in, in the table. Another term that I thought was important to highlight is the block-sensitive setback. So because it's such a diverse, um, diverse district with all these sub-districts, um, the setbacks are very, um, fluid, and we wanted to respect that. It's hard to go and code for every single instance of where that build-to line should be, and so by doing this, we're setting minimums, maximums. That's the new thing, is you can only, maximum, you only can build so far back. We want everything to be pushed pretty far forward to the front. But, um, the additional caveat is that in certain places, especially the more flex, um, urban edge places where it's much more, um, diverse and where there might be houses next to, um, gas stations, whatever that pattern is, it's very, it fluctuates a lot. So this basically requires you to take an average of the remaining buildings on that, um, so that it, it kind of forces you to be set back even further if it's a very traditional, um, line of houses or something. It's mostly in relation to those kind of house situations. Um, your main urban downtown core and, and old town aren't really affected by that, but that's, I'm just thinking about how buildings, the setback can respond to the context. Trying to allow some flexibility, too. That's another way to do that. So uses. I think it's important to note that with a form-based code, um, it's, we're not forgetting about uses, and frankly, that's why we have a, a few districts here, is because we wanted to be a little bit more refined. We wanted to acknowledge the fact that in the urban flex district, that there are existing industrial uses, um, some of those industrial uses might no longer be conforming. We're trying to limit it to smaller, light industrial uses that have less of an impact, less nuisance, um, because we do want to foster interesting new redevelopment in those areas. So, the use list expanded, doubled today, as I was fleshing this out. I think that Michelle was trying to be very generic in things, but I'm, didn't want you to be too, um, caught by someone proposing something that wasn't in the list. So this is, um, fluid as well. So in the draft that I sent Mike today, he forwarded that to you, the one you have there, I've added some use definitions as well, what we mean by R and D, what we mean by institutional. But you'll see across these different, um, districts, how, again, there are permitted uses, special land uses, and then a couple footnotes. So when we say along primary streets only, it's basically saying, for, um, the urban edge district, which is east of downtown, for instance, we, um, we're acknowledging that there might be opportunities for retail in those areas, but we don't want it embedded into the neighborhoods. Um, you, you have too much commercial as it is, and so if someone's gonna build, you know, like where Metro PCS is, they have to be located along Genesee, basically. Um, we don't want them beyond that, into other blocks or whatever. So it's a way to like limit, um, limit the uses a little bit. So here's where you start seeing certain things that would, um, require special land use, um, as well. Public assembly is something I added. We have to be careful with how we regulate churches, um, and other places of assembly. So those are all things that would theoretically still, still come to you to make the final determination on whether it's appropriate for those different areas. So, this is where I have this, um, question posed, where we think parking, um, makes sense. So, um, in the institutional district, we have this little caveat in recognition of, um, the hospitals, like the hospitals have bought up property, right? And put in parking lots. So, we understand that they need parking, um, and that that is gonna be a principal use. We just don't want people coming in and building parking lots willy-nilly. We want it to be attached to a principal use in an institutional case that is, um, like the hospital. Because other things that we have, um, zoned institutional is the riverfront itself. So where you already have some of those DDA parking lots in downtown, that, if you want to put parking along there, this is where we've kept the Riverfront Commission as part of the decision-making process, because to us, that gets, um, them to look at the whole riverfront as a whole, and think about where it makes sense to have parking along there. Parking's not the most desirable use for along the river, but also, um, it doesn't have to be that bad of a use, as long as it's, um, landscaped well and gives people access to the riverfront. So let's say you start getting more priad launches or whatever, there's going to have to be parking, and let's just make sure that it's sensitively done. Are there other places, um, where parking as like a principal use, so either a parking lot or a structure that's not tied to any things? If you think about like in Detroit, where you go or went and pay five dollars for a parking lot, that is, it's a business. Or a parking structure, whether that's the county parking structure, we can only tell them to do, what we want them to do so much. But if a ci, the city or DDA were to build a parking structure, let's just say it booms in the next ten years, because we're seeing that, um, in a lot of downtowns, that there's demand for more parking structures. Where do those make sense? Where, um, I'm not sure it makes sense for them to front your primary streets, so those places where we really want things walkable, that maybe they would be allowed in your Main Street district, but just not fronting on Washington or Genesee, for instance. Do you tend to agree with that sort of a thing? If there's going to be parking as a standalone use, that it be off the main drags? Is that sort, that's kind of what I was going, leaning towards this afternoon, looking at that. I'm seeing nods, that that sort of makes sense. Similarly, motor vehicle service stations and gas stations. Is there a place anywhere in this district for those really auto-oriented uses? I wasn't sure. We didn't have that in there. We didn't really talk about it much. I don't know if there are places on the west side of the river that are kind of those pseudo-industrial places where there's strip mall. I, I don't know if they make sense anywhere, but, um, I didn't want to prohibit them without, um, hearing from you guys if they make sense anywhere.
I think in our current ordinance, none of those are allowed.
Okay, so we can just leave them as not?
Now, there are some that are grandfathered in. Uh, I can think of three gas stations on the west side that are in the riverfront excused district. We have a couple of auto repair, repair places that are in that district now, but I think our general idea was to keep them out of those districts. Yes.
But, the ones that are, are there, fine, be non-conforming, but not allow new ones? That makes sense. That's kind of what I figured, I just wanted to confirm that, as I was going through my giant list of possible uses that might make sense. So I kind of touched on it, this idea of permitted versus special land use, you already are familiar with that. I added in an administrative section, I'm, I'm doing this for a variety of redevelopment-ready communities right now, and a big tenet of that program is to, um, you know, make the development review process easy. So, I know there are institutional challenges with engineering being on our staff. We can't, um, eliminate engineering review of things. There are things that might not need to come to you guys, um, that might not need to go all the way to council. And so, this is a wa, a chart that I, I did for another community. I'm working on like six ordinances at the same time right now, so I thought it applied, to you, to be thinking about what things, um, can be administratively approved, what things need to come before you, um, what, um, how much level of detail do they need to provide? Can they provide a concept plan? I don't know, do you have conceptual review right now? Where someone can br, bring in a less detailed plan, if all they're doing is reconfiguring their parking lot or something?
On some of the administrative approvals, we do that. The main thing, even on a conceptual plan, is that engineering still is requiring elevations. They want everything that's underground on that plan, and they're still requiring that.
Okay. So that might be the challenge in making things easier. So, um, I guess, I know I talked with Mike a little bit on the phone about parking, um, parking lots not necessarily needing to come before you, things that, so, we're not trying to eliminate your role in the site plan review process, we're really trying to streamline things, so that if it's already in the ordinance, with a form-based code, you have more standards that they're required to meet. So when they come to you with their complete site plan, you meaning the city generically, it should be ready to go. It should, it's predictable process, that if we write, write this code with enough detail in it, um, you'll get the kind of developments you're gonna want anyway. And so, by, through the redevelopment-ready process, um, it's really to, to try to strip down any red tape that doesn't need to be there. And so, this chart and this section in there would supersede your current site plan review process, and, um, I am just proposing this as a way to think about how to, um, make things easier to approve. I'm not tied to it, and would welcome discussion either now, or once you have time to think about it, to forward your thoughts to, to Mike. I know this is a lot to take in, and I hope I've been able to kind of guide you into how to read, how to read the draft. But that is, I don't know if anyone has any comments on that right now, or again, you need more time?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Um, under new development and major expansion-
Mm-hmm.
-I really think the planning commission needs to look at those. Um, under minor expansion, I believe the way our ordinance reads right now is anything that is less than twenty-five percent-
Okay.
...of the buildings that are there now can be approved administratively. So I think that that's fine where it is. Accessory straps, um, structures probably are fine the way they are. Those are, that's my-
And is this, is that already what it is in your ordinance?
That's what it is.
Because if we don't need to change anything, we don't-
Right. The parking, we seldom have anybody that wants to create more space than what's permitted.
Okay, that's good.
Um, I, in fact, I can't remember when it's been that way. That's something that, right now, the planning commission is supposed to look at parking lots, but we haven't had many, and I've approved a couple administratively after talking with engineering about it, because the increase in parking spaces were less than twenty-five percent of what was currently there. So I kind of fit that into the idea of that it was less than twenty-five percent, so it could be approved administratively, even though it wasn't a building.
Which is probably fine.
A, as an example, I wish Tom was here tonight, uh, the parking lot across the street from the Court Theater, we approved that?
No, we did not.
We did not?
Because it never came, well, I think you may have approved it, but, and this is a topic that we've been having discussion about lately.
I think we might have approved the vacation of an alley.
Yeah, there was, that's right, there was a gap in between two lot-
So that's not the future time it could be?
That happened, I think, even before I got here, the vacation of the alley. But it did come, I think it came before you, and the problem was Jerry Bergman had brought that on behalf of Tom, and engineering, uh, Jerry had proposed that they connect to the catch basin that was in the alley, in the middle of the alley. And by the time engineering got done with it, it had doubled the cost of the parking lot, and Jerry threw up his arms and said to hell with it. And Tom said, Tom told me, I, I drove around with Commissioner Bradley a couple of weeks ag, ago, just so that he could get an idea of the riverfront district, and he said that it had doubled the cost of the parking lot. So, at this point, the Court Theater is going to open with no parking, just as it was before. Uh, there were people that were parked over in that lot. It has a gravel base now, that were parked there before. After the theater closed, that kind of is growing up, there's grass there now, but I think there's still enough of a base that if people wanted to park there, they'd still be able to, as long as he doesn't identify it as a parking lot.
Major court for minor use, a tattoo shop.
Yeah, I think that was it, too. I had that conversation just a couple of weeks ago with engineering. What can we do to help some of these small businesses that are trying to improve the lot, but don't want to spend all of the money that's involved to bring it totally up to code, because they're prohibitive? Another one that we're looking at is where Woody sells hot dogs. He's got a lot that he owns across Mackinac to the north. To do what he wants to meet the current code is prohibitive for him to do it. Um, there's been a Court Street Theater, and I can think of a couple. I was in one downtown yesterday, that has a gravel base, and in the middle of it is a huge sand pit, that if you drove through it, you'd be stuck. But, nobody seems to want to do anything to improve those, because the cost to bring them up to code is, is very high. So we're trying to work on something to make-
Is that in their engineering standards? That's not-
In en, yeah, it's in the en, it's not in the zoning standard.
Because, um, yeah, there's only so much that we can do in this to, to do that. I, I should have put page numbers on here, I apologize. Towards the middle end, in this administrative section is a chart that says, um, basically, when they're upgrading their site, they only have to meet certain parts of the ordinance. So, getting at what Mike's saying, if all they're doing, if it's a small business that's just fixing their parking, we're not gonna require them to bring their facade in compliance. But once they hit a certain threshold, then they are. So that's the idea of kind of, how to deal with non-conformities, but also where these standards apply to those smaller, um, that they need, what, what levels they would comply with.
So we're trying to get engineering to agree to that, because what the businesses are proposing brings them closer to compliance-
Yes.
-but doesn't get them all the way there. And what can engineering do to relax some of their standards to make that happen?
It's a great discussion.
I told Mr. Braley that five-gallon buckets of gravel at a time, but you know.
So that's administrative section. So again, I dropped it in here knowing that it probably already existed in some form. So you can excise some of that out, Mike, if you, if it's already meeting what you already have. Um, we have some.
To answer your question, Mark, on that table, special land use, we had one this evening that will not go onto council.
That's good.
Once it's approved here, it's done.
Perfect. So really, the only things that go to council are rezonings?
Rezoning, um, vacations of streets.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess be thinking, you know, is there any, anything that, is it they're meeting all the standards of the ordinance? Um, be thinking about your role as a planning commission and what level of input you're providing. Um, are there any smaller scale things that, even though it's a brand-new development, that it's small enough that maybe development is going to get so busy that it's not worth bringing it all the way to you? If they meet the standards, they meet the form, letting Mike approve it, or Mike's follower, successor, whatever, that, that staff um, can check off, they check off all the boxes. Thinking, just be thinking about what you as a planning commission contribute to that process, since there's anything that can be relinquished with a more robust, detailed code. All right. So in talking about parking, so I kind of left parking open-ended now because I don't have it in my scope to like examine your existing parking um requirements right now. But I know it's, every community I go into, that's a contentious issue, and I know it has been here too with all the apartments going in. There aren't enough spots, and in some cases, the, you know, the ownership's on the developer to provide the spots that their tenants are demanding. Um, but without me having enough time to delve too deeply into your current parking standards, I'm curious if you think they generally work okay. Do they work okay in the Riverfront District? Are there things that you think the numbers are too high? Because what we can do is put a little section in here that kind of supersedes what your regular parking standards are.
Well, in the Riverfront Mixed Use District, we do have the right to not follow all of the parking requirements. Uh, one of the most current examples I can think of is the Bancroft. Uh, with the Bancroft, our requirements would have required 300 parking spaces. We said that we would waive some of those. It was the financer of the project that said, "We want at least 150 parking spaces," which was one per apartment. So we kind of went with what they, they wanted, but they needed. And I don't think that's all bad. Um, some of the other examples in downtown is we've got two bars in the Bancroft. None of those required any parking. Um, I think that one of the things that we could look at is including street parking as part of the requirements for the requirements for a certain business.
We could basically just add a couple sentences. One that says, you know, go look at the parking section. But in the case, we are, here, um, the, the, you know, administration or planning commission has the ability to waive parking and just based on this criteria. And it could be based on a parking study, based on, you know, the demand of the, the unit or whatever. And based on availability, we could do a certain radius within, um, you know, 300 feet public provision of public parking or on-street parking. The challenge is when you like use those things, then do you really count? We know that the Bancroft has used, you know, five on-street spaces and 20 dedicated spaces in the DDA parking lot next door, whatever. Like who's keeping track of that? So it's kind of a fine line between parking regulation and parking management. And I, I, you're not quite there yet where parking is becoming such a huge issue that it's contentious, but I see you going that way. So I guess, depending on how we word things now, um, I'm again seeing it in many other communities where we just, it's a question mark. How do we regulate this? Do we require the number of parking spaces? Do we let them be market-driven? Um, how, and then the role of the DDA and the city in providing public parking is kind of this weird nebulous private versus public thing. And um, I just, I don't want Mike or whoever has the authority to waive parking to have it come back and bite them in the butt later as well. So like, um, without specific criteria on which to base those waivers. So maybe that, if just adding some teeth to how, just so that you, it's not just super discretionary, but there are specific like, we will waive parking if X, Y, and Z, that will just give you some like defense to stand up on. Because it could become an issue in the next few years if you see, especially with Delta coming in and more development pressure. Um, I don't want you to get caught for waiving things willy-nilly. So maybe that's the way to go, and then reassess it as the alignment picks up.
Just so that the commission knows, um, I did have an intern loan to me by another department head here. Um, and we started doing a, a parking study in the downtown area on how many parking spaces were privately owned, how many were publicly owned, and where they're located. That was not completed, but it's well on its way to being completed. So that would help us out. The other things I think what we could look at are the types of businesses that may be busy from eight to five, but after five, there isn't anybody parking in that lot, so why couldn't that lot be used for another use? Um, we've talked, and I didn't get much comment from anyone that I brought it up to, of instead of the businesses having to create the parking, they would pay into a fund at the city or some other type of organization that then would provide parking in a lot or a ramp, which is very expensive to build and probably not feasible at this point, but maybe as parking gets more expensive. We've also talked about possibly having the county open up the ramp across from the Dow for 24 hours a day for other uses. Um, those are all options. I don't have the answer to that, and I don't seem to be getting much from above me as far as the direction that they want us to take. So if you guys could come up with a recommendation, that might be helpful to get somebody else moving on some of this.
Yeah, we talked about, um, we're doing some Dearborn as well. They're working through the RRC process. And right now, they have a payment in lieu, um, but the cost is so low that they can't actually like do anything with the funds. It's like a thousand dollars or something, a one-time fee or whatever. Like, it's not enough to actually build and maintain parking. But they're working in partnership with the DDA and looking at parking management strategies. And I think doing a parking study is the first key to really understanding of what, what your, your, you know, supply is. The next step's doing what is the demand. So I remember one of my first jobs nine years ago at LSL was driving my car through downtown Berkeley three times a day and counting the number of parked cars that were parked there. So getting an idea of what time of day different lots are busy, how people are using it. Again, that's another great intern job, someone who has time on their hands to just keep track of those numbers, um, just to give you kind of a pulse for where there might be issues. Um, I think probably keeping your current standards now probably makes sense. Um, coming to some sort of, yeah, like a resolution of support for investigating future parking strategy, parking management, um, would happen parallel to, to this code being adopted.
It's at a standstill right now until I find another intern. And we've been able to waive those standards in the Riverfront Mixed Use. I, I believe it says if it's in the vicinity of, of other parking. So downtown, you know, we've got a couple of ramps, even though one of them is used very sparingly. And we have several parking lots. You look behind where Delta's going and over near the Huntington Outdoor Park. There's a lot of parking in that area that at nighttime, it's, it's not used hardly at all.
Well, the Michigan Works Building, for example, in behind the Michigan Works, there's got to be a couple hundred parking spots back there.
But see, that's private parking, so that would have to be in agreement with the.
Are you aware of any shared parking agreements right now? Or do you allow them, or?
We would allow them. I'm not aware of them.
Promote it as a, you know, Michigan Works teaming up with new townhouses that go in somewhere, you know, on a pervert down, you know, that sort of thing. So we can put in some provision to encourage shared parking, like.
Maybe if there's a way to encourage it, at this point, that would just be between the private owners.
Exactly.
And we probably want to keep that there.
Yeah. Proof, you would just need proof to meet the parking standards that they have a shared parking agreement.
What do you do, how do you classify that gravel lot where Larry's Bar used to be?
That's the one I was talking about that has a big sand hole in the middle of it.
I mean, a lot of businesses rely on that little parking lot there. Wally's, Dawn of a New Day.
That's why I was there yesterday.
Who, is that Spicer? Who owns that?
I believe Dr. Sheehan owns it. So, but there are those types, and there.
Informal.
Um, actually, there is one, I have never seen it, but I understand that there is one parking, shared parking agreement between the Bancroft, between the Bancroft and SVRC. Once they take over the lot that's owned by the DDA by now. Right, right on the river by the side.
So we'll put, we'll put some language in on, is that in the Riverfront section now, or is it in the parking section?
It's in the Riverfront section.
Because I was looking in the parking and I didn't see it, and I, I need to go back.
I think it's right in the very first paragraph.
Okay.
It says something, it's like one sentence.
On my list of things to do is to go through your current Riverfront District and make sure we're not missing anything that, um, now that we have a good, solid draft to work from. So I guess in terms of next steps, um, digest this a bit. Take a look, um, provide Mike with some feedback, and he can forward that compiled feedback to me. Um, I'll probably continue to tweak things as I work through Dearborn and Ferndale and all my other communities as I, um, come up with better solutions that might apply to you guys. Um, I think it's a strong, um, statement of what you want to see in the Riverfront and provides more clarity and, um, detail than your current district does. So, you know, it can be overwhelming. Again, I'm trying to make it simpler and easier to use. In fact, that's a call I have with my colleagues in Colorado tomorrow, is how to make it even easier to use. I don't want it to be overwhelming, but we want it to be clear enough. Like the idea is that doing this upfront was being clear to your developers what you want to see. So, um, providing enough detail, but, but making it easy to use is kind of the goal. So I'd say shepherd those, those comments to Mike. We'll continue to bounce drafts when we have time back and forth to each other. Um, we did have another, um, public meeting in our scope. Um, I'm dwindling, um, our budget, um, and so I don't know that a full-blown public meeting like we've had in the past is necessary. But one idea that I mentioned to Mike before the meeting that I have here is maybe, what we've done recently is had kind of an informal open house before the public hearing. So it would be a way for people to drop in and ask questions and kind of have a chance to absorb the code. We could have exhibits similar to how I presented things today. That just kind of gives an overview of how it works. Um, we had such good stakeholder input, I don't want to lose momentum from all those people that were really enthusiastic and excited. I want them to feel like we listened and we're implementing it. It's just hard to get people to understand what zoning is and the details of that. So I don't know if that's the, um, our direction to go. It would be a more cost-effective way to do it than me coming up here and pulling another huge, um, public open house. But, um, I, I, we can talk more, Mike, while the, uh, the idea is that next up is adoption. So let's get this to a point where we're ready to, um, go through that process. So I think there's enough detail there right now, and as we have revised drafts, we'll, we'll share them with you. Any questions for me or Mike?
I really do want feedback from you on this. I mean, I have some ideas, but I'm not always sure that mine are the correct ones either. So I really would like to hear some feedback from people. I do have an email list of everyone who has, um, attended one of the other public hearings that we've had. So it wouldn't be a problem to invite them to a pre-approval hearing or a pre-public hearing so that they could ask the questions that they want to ask. Initially, we had thought about bringing this next month to the planning commission for a recommendation to council. But there's a couple of, um, items on the agenda next month that may take some time. Uh, they're, they're somewhat controversial, so I think it might be better. I believe our December meeting is the 19th of December because of Christmas being there. So it'll be held on the third Tuesday instead of the fourth. And maybe that's the time that we would have the public hearing. And if you guys think it's a good idea, invite the public for a pre-meeting. Yeah, I might be able to send them some of this so they can take a look. At least maybe the summary, the, the presentation that you gave to give them some idea and let them know if they want to read the whole, the whole site plan. And actually, I could send that along to her, the whole ordinance, so that they can take a look.
Maybe let me clean up some stuff based on today.
Right.
And I'll send you a clean copy next week.
So just so that you know, next month, we're going to have, uh, public hearings on the renaming of Johnson Street Bridge. And I think you probably had heard in the paper that, um, or in the news that East Genesee, they wanted to rename East Genesee. That petition has been withdrawn, but now they've submitted a petition to rename Second Street. Um, that would be the one for Roosevelt Austin. And the other one is to rename the Johnson Street Bridge to the Blumer Himmick Z Bridge. Um, those will be coming before you next month. I do have some historical information on the bridge that I just received today. Um, Second Street, I don't have much at this point. I can tell you that there are some people involved in historical groups that are in the city that are totally opposed to renaming anything in the city. I've been told, and I'm not, I can't, I don't know this as fact, but that there has not been a street renamed in Saginaw since Saginaw and East Saginaw came together in the 1800s. And some of the people that are historically minded do not want to see anything renamed.
I'm not sure that's true. I think Federal Street was Germania Street at one time.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah, that was Lamson, yeah.
See, those are the things I need to find out because on Johnson Street, I have been able to verify that it was part of the original platte in 1850. And that when the bridge was built in 1878, I believe that was the first bridge over the Saginaw River in Saginaw that the bridge just took on the street name. But, but those were named after two prominent citizens of Saginaw, um, Solomon and Daniel Johnson, who were the founders actually of Zilwaki, but also had a steamboat on the Saginaw River, built a plank road from Zilwaki to the west side of where the Johnson Street Bridge is now. And had planned a bridge, a plank road all the way to Mackinac City. So, which never happened. But they were bankers. They had ownership of several sawmills. And they also named the city of Zilwaki and had, um, so be influenced with some of the boat captains. And so some of the German immigrants who were headed to Milwaukee were told that Zilwaki was the place, and they got out so that they, because they needed people to work. And they got out so that they, because they needed people to work in the sawmills. And so they were, they were let off in Zilwaki thinking they were in Milwaukee. And to get people to work in some of the sawmills along the river. So they were some characters, but they did a lot of different things while they were in Saginaw. They came from New York in 1848. And I believe Daniel was elected as a state representative and was also one of the main beginning people in Zilwaki when Zilwaki Township was formed. So there's quite a history behind them. And the historians don't want to see that history erased by renaming a bridge. So, and I've had quite a few comments, probably more than I've had on anything, on the renaming of the street.
I've seen a lot of negative comments on social media on, oh, renaming.
Every comment I have seen has been negative, or had received has been negative.
It tends to be social media, though.
Well, and these are people that have picked up the phone and called.
These are my friends on social media that are saying.
And these are people, though, I probably have had 15 between the two. And every one of them was negative. That was an email or the phone call to me.
I know the person that emailed here.
So the other thing to interject is on the Genesee Street, I think some of the people that put on the petitions to rename the street didn't realize that when you rename a street, you gotta pay for all the signs. The people who want to change, the city does not do it.
So the bill just for street signs was estimated to be $8,000.
Yes, that's off our responsibility.
Yeah, that's a weird responsibility.
They're coming to the commission to rename a street.
Yeah.
Well, you would make your recommendation to council.
Well, I understand that, but we shouldn't have to hear it at all. Someone needs to say no.
But council referred it to us, right?
Well, no, the council referred it to us.
Yes, that's how it's supposed to work. The petition's received in the clerk's office. The clerk sends it to city council, who refers it to the planning commission.
The other problem is, like Mike, tell them how many people have to sign the petition to change the name of the street.
And we're working on this. This is one thing that I didn't realize because since I've been here, I haven't had any of these requests. To, let's say that you want to vacate an alley. Everyone on that alley has to sign the petition. To rename a street, it can be one resident of the city or one business owner that doesn't even live in the city, or an organization. And there's no upfront cost. I mean, I've estimated, when it was East Genesee, when it was East Genesee, I estimated that between the ad in the paper and amassing to everyone who lived on the street, that there would be about $300 in costs. If you file a petition to vacate for a site plan approval, for a special use, everything has an upfront cost. In this case, there is none. And so you can have one person, in fact, on one of these petitions, not one person who signed it lived in the city. But one businessman in the city did sign it. So it was allowed. So we're trying to tighten up some of those regulations. First off, that there be a cost of $300. I'm proposing that at least 51% of the people on an affected street have, that our property owners have to sign that petition. Part of it is that the person may have to be dead for five or 10 years before it's even considered. Because in the cases we have now, both of those people are still living.
Are still living.
Yes. So we're trying to tighten up on that because one thing that I see is if, if one of these were to get approved, we may have a whole influx of people. I mean, I want three. I want one named Michael, one named Faust, and one named Michael Faust. And I'm the only one that has to sign the petitions. You know, so we're trying to look at that ordinance too and get some changes made to it. There's no old business, there's no longer any public comment, so motion to adjourn.